Hello, everyone. This regular meeting of the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee will now come to order at 7:00 PM on July 26, 2018. Just to note, this meeting is being both audio and video recorded, and if anyone's recording this meeting in the audience, please disclose that now. Seeing none, we'll move on. While we're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Okay, thank you, Superintendent. Please take your role.
Dr. Craftries?
Here.
Ms. Di Tomaso?
Here.
Mr. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Gazillo?
Here.
Mr. Hagmeyer will not be here tonight. Mr. Hopper?
Here.
Mr. Wackertel is not going to be here tonight. Mrs. Lanzori?
Here.
Mr. Les?
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Tucker is not here. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
She's going to be late. Mr. Armelfast?
Here.
We have open seats in Washington and Covington. Mr. Bartels?
Here.
And our CBA rep and student reps are not here tonight. We have a forum.
Okay. Thank you. Chair certifies that this agenda is valid in accordance with open meeting law. Are there any responses from the audience at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. If the committee would oblige, we have DRA in Skanska with us this evening for the Wacona Building Report, so if I'd like to move that up, up front, and have them come before us now. So, welcome, everyone.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
(inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible) What do you name? Carl Franceschi with DRA, for those who don't know me.
(inaudible)
Just quickly, to bring you up to speed on where we are with the project, we've been at this for a while now and had a very successful process this far. We'll share that with you. Just to refresh who the players are, on the team, obviously, we are happy to be in front of you. We technically work for Sean's other hat that he puts on as Chair of the Building Committee, representing the town. And we always like to point out, too, there's this other partner called the MSBA as part of all this process, too, that you probably know. That stands for the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And you have a wonderful representation of building committee members on that group. And in terms of the process with the MSBA, you probably know that this is fairly prescribed process. You can go on their website, by the way, and find out a lot of additional good information. But to put this in context, we've already made the first step here. These are the three major steps of the feasibility schematic design process, the first part of this project. So, we made the submission of the so-called preliminary design program back in May. It included the educational program that the administration worked on with help from the community and the visioning sessions and so forth. We did, and our team, did a review of the existing conditions of the existing building and summarized that, and we generated the sort of a spectrum of alternatives at that time. We submitted that, we got comments from the MSBA, and we responded to those comments, and we're moving on to this next section here, which is called the preferred schematic, or really, the preferred alternative, because we take these alternatives and get down to one at the end of this phase. And so, this is a very sort of opportune time to meet with you, because we're right in the middle of narrowing, winnowing that list down, and we want to share that with you. So, we'll update the educational plan as needed. We'll show how we're evaluating the alternatives and get down to that preferred option. If all goes well in that step with the MSBA, we will then move on to, you know, developing that one option with more detail, more information, so that a good cost estimate can be done, and really, put together the full scope of the project, the budget and the schedule, and submit that to the state in February, with the goal of eventually going before the board at their April meeting, and then going before your entire region. For them, that's when the citizens can vote on this project to move forward for the full amount in the spring. As we understand, this is, discussion is in process, but there's no date yet officially for that, is there, already, as we understand? But that's a district-wide vote, regional vote. Carl, what's the date, you know, April? It's usually the last Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, it's usually at the end of April. It hasn't been established yet, because they wait until, like, vacations and stuff, so by the end of this year, we'll kind of better feel for it. But it's definitely in April that we'll target.
Can't have a community vote until after that? Generally, technically, you could. Most everyone waits till after that?
Yeah, the board, the MSBA prefers that you wait until after they have the opportunity to approve the project. Some just have pending approval from the MSBA, so after April, you could have the next day, if we will, for it until May.
So, just to recap, I'm sure many of you are familiar that we got the educational plan by conducting these visioning sessions that were very well-attended and very meaningful, had a lot of significant importance. And the idea is that this process, designing a school of any kind, whether it's an addition or renovation or new, it starts with the education plan, and it's based on that, and that really shapes a lot of our decisions. And a couple of the key things that came out of it, this sentence is an important one, we think, that Wacona offers comprehensive opportunities. It sort of has, you know, the opportunities of a large school, but with a small school feel. To us, that's one of the kind of guiding principles as we move through this, but there were several other things that came up, too. We won't go into all the details, but, you know, we did talk about these kinds of educational issues, these kinds of facility issues, and different styles of teaching and learning that should be involved in whatever project is developed. Again, all this was done almost a year ago, or before, you know, we even thought about teaching and learning, or whether it's an addition or new construction, rather. Couple of the key diagrams, too, that came out of it was the idea that it would be most successful to organize the building in sort of these clusters or pods of classrooms, which have a variety of classroom sizes, some small ones, some large ones, that actually have connection to a science lab, and small group rooms for breakout and for special ed, and some collaborative space of some kind, too. So, you might contrast this with the way, you know, traditional schools have been organized along the corridor with similar-sized classrooms. This is sort of significantly different than that. And if you put these together to make a whole school, you take several of these classroom clusters. One of the thoughts is that they should be organized around kind of the 21st century idea of a library called the Learning Commons, because it's not so much about books anymore, it's more about having opportunities to come together and collaborate, work on projects, get access to information, and this can be really sort of an extension of the classrooms. The other notion that this diagram shows is, there's sort of a separation of the academic side of the school from the more public side of the school there, but we need to maintain good security, have a main entrance, and that the cafeteria likewise has evolved from traditional cafeterias to be more of a common space. It's used around the clock, almost. It's a gathering space before school, after school, during school, not just for lunchtime. And it's also, in this kind of configuration, can be the lobby to serve, you know, before the gym or theater or auditorium events. And as I said, our team went through and evaluated existing conditions. We looked at the entire building, all the systems, all the materials. Won't go into too many details here, but, and we also looked at both what we call facilities issues, kind of the nuts and bolts of, you know, does it keep the weather out, does it keep the heat in, and so forth, to programmatic issues, about do the spaces match up with current standards and good practices for classrooms or whatever kinds of spaces they are, are they appropriately located and so forth. And these are some of the findings, maybe not surprising to those of you familiar with the building, but there are a lot of systems and materials in that building that, though it's been well-maintained, that, you know, they're 50 years old or more, some original equipment still in there, and some things, you know, definitely would need to be addressed, even if a project didn't happen, for sure. There are handicap accessibility issues, there are some other building system issues there, too. And this quote kind of sums up the nature of the mechanical-electrical systems, that, again, most things are kind of beyond their expected service life. The building is over 50 years old. And this is a diagram that somewhat summarizes some of the space issues in the school, where the red, yellow, and green coloring, red are spaces that are kind of deficient, they're below the size of standards today, the green are ones that are okay, and the yellow ones are kind of in the middle, they're marginally acceptable. But some of the real issues here are the science spaces in the building, and some of these existing classrooms are pretty significantly below standards. They're small for their function. So, these are some of the deficiencies that we've noted in our report. This is all what was in that first submission to the state. One of the other things that we do as part of this phase of the project is list every space in the school as to what size and numbers they are today, and what's proposed, growing out of that educational plan. How many classrooms do we want? How many science labs? How many breakout areas? What size classrooms, and so forth. And then, this column over here is one we don't touch. This is the state's standards for a school of this enrollment, and the design enrollment is 460. That was decided in kind of a negotiation between the district and the state well before the project even started. That was the agreed upon, and we understand that's a little below what it is today. It's a little bit of a challenge for all of us, as, you know, in a project to design a school that's slightly smaller than the number of students you have now, but it is looking out, you know, 10 or 15 years at somewhat declining enrollments throughout the state and throughout the county here, too.
Carl, it's 85% capacity, though, right?
That's, the way these buildings are planned is for so-called 85% utilization, Sean. That generally means that at any period of the day, you know, 85% of the classrooms are occupied, a few are vacant. That's really what gives you the most flexibility for scheduling, but, you know, push game to shove, you could raise that a bit. You could also get more students in the, in an individual classroom than the 20 to 24 that are planned here in some cases, so there is built-in sort of room for expansion. But there's also room for expansion in our thoughts as we look at each of the options, to make sure on the site, there was room to expand the building, too. We think that's prudent, even in a region with declining enrollments. It makes sense just to think about that from a planning point of view. So, we did that. So, the proposed space summary now, these are just some of the highlights, but one of the things to take away, we're somewhere around 125,000, 128,000 square feet in the proposed program. And again, this is based on an idealized kind of program, not a specific design at this point. And the existing building is around 114,000 square feet, so the existing building is a little bit small right now for the given enrollment, so even a renovation option would need some small addition in there. So, here's all those alternatives we talked about. We came up with 14 of them. One of them is called base repair. That's really not an educational option, it's literally just fixing things that are broken, but the other 13 are ones that try to address the educational needs and the space needs of the building. Four of them were addition renovations, and nine of them were new construction options. And I'll go through these very quickly, maybe many of you have seen these before, but here's where we are right now. We've taken that list of 14 down to five, kind of my call them semifinalists, that we looked at a little bit closer and developed in a little more detail. We are now at one with three variations to it, and we've just met with the working group, we're working on that, we're going to be presenting to the Building Committee in August, and we'll come back to you again in August, too, with the one final one that we hope to submit to the state in September. So, the way we narrowed that list was through this preliminary evaluation matrix, where we listed some key criteria, and I know you can't read this, but this is a matrix with key criteria across the top, and, you know, very conceptual cost estimates, and then all the options down the side. And after doing that is how we went from the 14 down to the five options. And we also had these community workshops, many of you are aware of, and we got input from the community, too, on those options, and that helped inform us in the Building Committee on where to go. So, these were the four addition renovation options, and of that, we narrowed that list to two that seemed that were in that group of five semifinalists, you might say, but as we went through the evaluation process, those are no longer on the table now. But let me just quickly share with you what they were. This was the one that we call number one, addition renovation number one, keeps the entire existing building, renovates it fully, and adds a wing here in the back to basically connect the corridors, so the ones, corridors that are now dead-end corridors become, and it sort of looks like this in plan, so we're adding some classroom space, some science lab, and we're reorganizing the existing building. So, that was one renovation option, and it looked like that three-dimensionally. The rest of the site would remain basically as-is. The more extreme renovation option, if you want to call it that, this is more akin to what Mount Graylock is doing. This saves the existing gym and saves the existing auditorium, and then builds all-new for all the academic space. So, if you can get oriented here, you can see the orange dashed lines of the rest of the school that would ultimately be demolished in this option. So, this one is sort of like 80% new and 20% renovation, and will look like that on the site. So, the site plan would change, you now have, you know, you'd lose the baseball field that's here, we'd rebuild it here, we'd gain some green space here, and you still have a drop-off in front of the school, and the parking would be slightly reconfigured and so forth. So, and that option looks like that, kind of three-dimensionally. It had some negatives, it's, you know, kind of a unusual configuration plan, it sort of stretches a great deal. This is a two-story addition, by the way, to keep it compact there, and it was very expensive in the scheme of things. It was, it was as expensive as building all-new and less attractive from an educational point of view. And then, in terms of the new options, these are all the locations on the site that we looked at for new construction. And you might notice that they're all, obviously, outside of the existing footprint, so that the strategy would be that whichever of these, you could build in such a way to keep the existing school in operation while the construction's ongoing. This is what's happening, for instance, in Pittsfield, at the Conic High School, where a new school's being built across the driveway from the existing, the new school's about to open, and the old school's about to be demolished and replaced with playing fields. So, of those six locations, there were some variations, so we actually ended up with nine total new construction options here, and we narrowed it down to three semifinalists. So, these are all positions number one, position number two, position number three, that tended to be towards the front of the site, not the back, for a number of reasons, and proved to be the most sort of fruitful and advantageous. And in the end, this is the option that we're pursuing, is option two, in that, in terms of location, but we do have variations now of the footprint. You might notice, either configuration of the building is slightly different, but the location of the building is the same in each case. So, it's sort of in site location number two, but the preference is for new construction, located somewhere here, it's sort of half on the baseball field, half on the existing parking lot. Yes?
Are those all two-story buildings?
They are two-story, partially two-story, partially one-story there. But again, in our study, we had a couple one-story options. They were both inefficient in terms of how they used the site, and they didn't satisfy or didn't address the education plan as well as we think a two-story solution does, in making a more compact school, a feeling of, that opening sentence that we talked about, the large school opportunities, but with a small school feel, it made it feel more like, you know, one school, one, you know, school spirit, school student body had a place and a commons area that could come together. So, these are the ones we're currently studying with the Building Committee, and hopefully we'll come back to you in, later in August, with the one recommended option right now. We're developing each of these a little bit further, but just quickly to show you, you know, we did look at one in front of the school, I'll go through these quickly, because they were dismissed, a more linear kind of building there that barely fits, but could be built in front of the existing school, adjacent to the road, right there. You can sort of see how close it is, we can still get a bit of a bus loop there with some parking off it, but most of the parking is around back or on the sides of the school in that option. So, here's option, the site plan number two, as we said, has the advantage of, you know, you could build the entire school here, adjacent to the existing building, maintain that access to get back to the kitchen service area, that driveway still would exist right there, so what's being disturbed during construction is the parking lot and the baseball field, but the entire rest of the site and the school could operate as it does today. And here's a footprint, where again, there's the two-story portion of the building, these are those classroom clusters, some of its open area for collaboration, some of its closed, small group rooms. You can see there are small classrooms, larger classrooms, science lab associated with each cluster, and that Learning Commons space in the center of the building here. And on this part of the building, here's the main entrance, here's a secondary entrance over here, there's the auditorium and music rooms, there's the gymnasium and locker rooms over there, and the commons area, the cafeteria commons area is in the middle of the building there. So, that's the one that has a couple variations to it as well. There's the second floor, and the variations are, like we said, closing off this courtyard instead of keeping it open, it changes the circulation, now you can sort of flow around the building, and it also keeps this kind of security, you might say. If you let students out there for, at lunchtime or something, you know they're not going to wander off, and likewise, strangers aren't going to wander into it either, so to speak. So, those are kind of the differences there. Again, the two-story portion of the building with a main stair right here in the center of the building that relates to the commons below, brings you up here, the two classroom clusters on the upper floor as well. And that's what that would look like three-dimensionally. And the third option is slightly different now that it has a single entrance point here, still in the same orientation. By the way, north is to the left here, so this classroom wing is facing south, which is the best orientation for the academic portion of the building. That was an important point that, as we evaluated these options, I just want to mention that. But the difference here in this layout is kind of that central entrance and the way the commons relates to the rest of the building. So, it looks like this. So, there's still a central entrance, right immediately adjacent to administration for security, still the gym on this side. Here, the auditorium now is kind of buried inside the building, which is, oops, I'm sorry, which is actually a good thing in the sense that, you know, theater wants to be windowless anyways, doesn't need to be on the outside of the building, but it makes for a more compact footprint, and it allows this common area to have more daylight outside to the south, so it'd be a very bright space, and it becomes the heart of the school in that regard, still functions as the lobby for these spaces. So, we're pursuing this one as well. That's what the upper floor would look like. So, as you come up these stairs here, there's the Learning Commons now on the upper level, again, between the two clusters of classrooms. So, very similar adjacencies, very similar kind of components, but you can see there's kind of subtle differences, and we'll pursue this a little bit further and come back with one recommended option.
Carl?
Yes, Rick. What's in that space above the, you go back two pages, is it locker rooms, the gray area?
Yes, that's, this is the servery, since this also functions cafeteria, so that's the servery, that's the kitchen, this is the back-of-house mechanical-electrical. So, everything that's in gray is kind of back-of-house, non-student areas. Every building kind of needs a back door, you know, you have deliveries, you have trash, you have boiler rooms. This, in this case, puts the boiler room kind of in the center of the building, which is good for distribution of heating pipes and so forth, right there. So, that's that layout. We looked at one, you know, this is a more linear scheme, it's no longer oriented south, though, now, that's one of the negatives of this option that we looked at, even though it's similar classroom clusters, but just to show you that we did look at all these different options, and then we narrowed it down, as we said, using these kinds of criteria. And again, this came from feedback of the Building Committee and the community as well as to what's important. This, the evaluation isn't purely based on cost. It's not as though we designed each of these and they all have equal qualifications, so we just choose the lowest cost. There's generally, you know, differences in how each of these options address some of these criteria. And the cost, actually, certainly among the new options, was relatively so similar that it's not really a discriminating kind of criteria. It's kind of equal for all of those new options. And the cost for the renovation options, as we mentioned, let me show you, I'm sorry, we have this chart right here. Again, if you can see those numbers there, these are, these were the five semifinalist options here, two, these two were the renovation ones, addition renovation, these three were the new construction options. And this is the one here that ultimately rose to the top here, but it does have three variations to it that we're still working on. So, that's roughly where we are with this, still developing those three options, and we'll develop them three-dimensionally, as well as from a cost point of view, we'll look at them a little closer to fine-tune the cost. We're also working on the cost of the base repair option and the addition renovation option, just to make sure that those numbers are on par with the new construction options in terms of how, you know, how much detail goes into them. So, that's what's ahead of us. And as we said, the goal of this next phase is to make the submission by early September, I think it's September 12th.
12th.
12, yeah. So, we'll come back to you, I think we're planning for August 23rd, you have a meeting scheduled for that date, we hope to get on that agenda as well. We'll be meeting with the Building Committee likewise at a similar time, too, and so we can come back to you with one option, get your blessing, to submit this to the state. That's where we are.
Good. Any questions? Thanks for your attention.
I just have some comments.
Sure.
I really like a couple things about the design, going to two floors, where it's more efficient for heating.
It is, yeah.
And also, in the future, we may have year-round schools, so I hope you're like, you're doing what we did in Eskes, you know, you'll build in the option for air conditioning in the summer, not necessarily in the fall, but have the ductwork everything in place, like Eskes has.
Yeah, invariably, that's a key discussion we'll have with the Building Committee as to, how much of the building is air-conditioned? Certainly, you want spaces like this, the administration area to be air-conditioned, they are used in the summer and often occupied, but right, in the classrooms, how much of it, if any, should be air-conditioned, or whether it should have the provision for future?
Exactly, we should go with the option in the future.
Yeah.
I also like the fact that the cafeteria is essentially located right next to the auditorium and the gym, because they can use that as like a reception area, staging area for events, especially when the weather's bad outside.
Yeah, yeah, we agree, that's a great way to get sort of multipurpose out of a space. By locating and strategically, you know, you can save on space and get multiple uses out of one space.
Right. And I have a comment for the Western School Committee, when I first came on board 16 years ago, they were looking at replacing Wacona at the time, because it was already starting to have troubles with it, and that eventually got kiboshed because of the transportation budget, the state pulled the funding, and there was a whole bunch of financial issues there. But at the time, a new school would have cost anywhere between 25 and 40 million, and here we are, 15 years later, paying double. So, let's do this now before it's done and another tension.
One of the points we make, too, that the base repair option is also something to consider in that, those are repairs that we believe are going to be necessary within five to 10 years anyways. So, if no project were to happen, it's not as though you're off, you know, scot-free. You still have that responsibility for spending pretty significant money on your own dime without the reimbursement of the state.
Yeah, remember, too, you have a partner called MSBA, so your tax dollars coming back, so, like Carl said, 10 years from now, who knows where you're going to be, you can spend all this money on your own.
Yeah. And I was all for replacing the school back then, but it didn't happen.
While we're talking about costs, there's one other thing, I always like to make a point of, you may know your reimbursement rate is something like 54%, I think it is, and of the numbers that we shared with you, please don't do the math, where you multiply that number times 54% and think your share is the balance, because unfortunately, invariably, there are always some costs that are not eligible for reimbursement. So, technically, the 54% is 54% of eligible costs, and the entire project cost is not going to be eligible, we can guarantee that. You can't design a school today that meets the quality and size and so forth that you want and you need, you deserve, for the thresholds that the state... you want and you need, you deserve for the the thresholds that the state imposes on these projects. It's just their way of keeping costs down and and making it uniform across the the Commonwealth, so they set the bar pretty low unfortunately, so invariably they're going to be ineligible costs. So the effective reimbursement rate is going to be significantly, you know, 10 or 15% lower than that 54%. Just so you understand that, don't let the word get out that people start doing the math right away, we need to guard against that. Yes?
Yeah, and the plan you've planned bringing out, it will take up a parking area, where do we plan on parking when it's during the construction?
Yeah, we we thought about that from a preliminary point of view, let me go back, well, I guess we can use that slide right there. When when the school is under construction here, what we intend is, see this parking here, this is in the front yard of the school currently, we would propose that that actually gets built before the projects start. That permanent parking gets built first and used as temporary parking, so to speak, during the construction phase, because you're right, this big parking lot that sits up here is going to be out of commission. This entire zone, you know, will be fenced in and be the contractor's purview for construction activity, but we want to make sure that the driveway that gets you back, you know, to the to the fields and to the service area, that would stay open. And so to the extent that this parking here doesn't satisfy the school, we would envision some temporary parking back here, back by the boiler room and the auto shop in that area. We may have to expand the pavement a bit on a temporary basis for temporary parking during construction, but we certainly would, you know, that's in our planning and in our thoughts.
Thank you.
Yes?
Can you give an example of something that would not be reimbursable?
Yeah, the biggest one, as I said, is just the total cost of construction of a new school or a renovation, but MSBA sets the the threshold as to what they'll reimburse, up to $333 a square foot right now. They do periodically change that, raise it. But the current cost of construction is more like $450 a square foot for, you know, reasonable, appropriate, you know, 50-year lifespan construction. So right off the top, that difference is not eligible for reimbursement. That's a major, that's probably the major one. There are some others, like site work, even though, you know, the cost of building these fields or this parking lot, those are eligible for reimbursement. Once they exceed 8% of the cost of the building itself, that's where they cut off eligibility for reimbursement as well. And again, invariably, to build any kind of building with related parking and fields, the the site work is more like, you know, 10, 12, 15% of the cost of the building, not 8. So again, that gap unfortunately is not eligible for reimbursement. And then there's a host of little things too, but those are the major ones. Oh, one other, I'm sorry, that is important, the size of the auditorium. We've heard a lot of, you know, concern, the state would only reimburse up to an auditorium that houses two-thirds of the enrollment. So in this small school, relatively small school, with a, you know, a design enrollment of 460, that's only, what is that, 200 or maybe 300 seats, something like that? That's half of what your current auditorium is. People understand that's not sufficient for this community or this school. So we are designing an auditorium in the, put in the program 550 seats. So that difference, again, that space on a prorated basis is not going to be eligible for reimbursement in the district, we'll need to pay that 100%.
So when the time comes for us to go to the voters, we will know what is reimbursable and what...
You will, very precisely.
It's just, like you said, 72, 54%, okay, 35 is what you're going to pay. We will know what it's going to break out as.
You will, and we will even do a preliminary breakdown by town. You know, that assessment is based on average enrollment, right?
Yes.
Five-year average or?
For capital projects, it's based on the October 1 enrollment, not five years, it's that one year.
Oh, okay.
By town, by children in the building.
Right. So we can do a preliminary, you know, that changes each year if the enrollment changes a little bit, so it's hard to be definitive, but we couldn't predict for each town what their share of the district cost will be. But we'll have very precise numbers by that time next spring when the vote comes. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Thanks for that.
The Chair's report, would a member please make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of June 28th? Here we go, motion in a second to accept the minutes of the meeting of June 28, 2018. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Motion carries.
Move warrant number...
Two extensions.
Move warrant number AP2018-54 dated June 30th, 2018, in the amount of $167,347.90.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number 2018-53. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Stay.
On extension, motion carries.
Move warrant number...
Two extensions.
Move warrant number AP2018-54 dated June 30th, 2018, in the amount of $40,512.90.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number AP2018-54. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
Two extensions, motion carries.
Move warrant number AP2019-AP1 dated July 13th, 2018. This warrant was previously signed in the amount of $1,043,746.66.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number AP2019-AP1. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
Two extensions, motion carries.
Move warrant number PR-2019-1 dated July 12, 2018. This warrant was also previously signed in the amount of $419,387.47.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR2019-1. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Stay.
Two extensions, the motion carries.
Move warrant number PR2019-1D dated July 12, 2018, in the amount of, this motion, this warrant was also previously signed in the amount of $74,607.19.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR2019-1D. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
Two extensions, the motion carries.
Move warrant number AP19-2 dated July 26, 2018, in the amount of $576,765.86.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number AP19-2. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
Two extensions, the motion carries.
Move warrant number PR19-2 dated July 26, 2018, in the amount of $423,507.47.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR19-2. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
Two extensions, the motion carries.
Move warrant number PR19-2D dated July 26, 2018, in the amount of $156,272.7.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR19-2D. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
Two extensions, the motion carries.
Move warrant number 2018-53 dated June 30th, 2018, in the amount of $167,347.90.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number 2018-53. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
They say something else? Okay. Any opposed? Extensions?
Stay.
Two extensions, motion carries.
Move warrant number AP2018-54 dated June 30th, 2018, in the amount of $40,512.90.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number AP2018-54. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Stay.
Two extensions, motion carries.
Move warrant number AP2019-AP1 dated July 13th, 2018, in the amount of $1,043,746.66.
Second.
Are those the same words? This is the second time through.
You kind of didn't do...
They're the same ones.
Really? Okay. I vote. Well, we're, you're double the vote.
Okay. Definitely, yes.
That takes two warrants.
Thank you.
That's honest to be. Yeah.
You just got into a rut.
Okay. Sorry about that. I'm reporting to the Chair, we still have two school committee vacancies, one in the town of Washington, one in the town of Covington. We have the school committee election, the seats that are going to be due up for election this fall, and that's all the Chair has to report, move on to reports for the subcommittees. Rick.
No report.
No report, okay. Move on to finance.
We had a meeting this evening at 5:30. Proceeded with validating our agenda, there was no comments from the audience. We had approval of minutes from our May 22 meeting this year, maybe we reviewed end-of-year transfer requests. I think the Chair is going to give a brief overview.
Do you want to do the transfers first?
Sure.
So you have a transfer sheet in front of you, it's like this. And really all this is, is to balance the budget at the end of the year, move money from surplus accounts to over-expended accounts. And the explanation on the right-hand side tells you exactly what it was used for. You'll see some transfer from salary lines to substitute lines and from other accounts to rebuilding improvements at the, during the course of the year. So the total amount is $354,625. Are there any questions on the request?
How much of the, how much of the floor are we up to at Craneville?
This will bring us down, you know where the kindergarten part is with the big opening? I think it brings us right down to there.
And and why are we putting carpet in the office? I thought we were doing great with carpet, and now we're putting carpet in.
In the office areas, we are putting carpet in.
Okay.
Mr. Les.
Because my imagination, during the year, we have a few transfers as well too. Normally, when I first came on the school committee, the only transfers we did was at the end of the year. This is normal, you know, this is an average amount. But during the year, there was very little transfers until the past couple of years. Why is that?
Um, I, I bring forth transfers quarterly. If I know that an account is in, over-expended at a certain point, and I know I have the money in a different account that I can move over, I will do that quarterly. And I've been doing that now for six years. So it's sort of, there's two ways to think about it. You can hold everything until the end and have much more than this at the end of the year, and that's the way that we did do it in Pittsfield, but it seems more organized to do it quarterly.
How, how well are we sticking to our budget? I mean, is there any, like, someone making financial decisions during the year that has to be paid for by some other budget?
Uh, our, our expenditures are all approved in the financial office, so someone can't expend money without having prior approval for a purchase. So those are all reviewed on a daily basis as I get them.
Plus it's still on the audit as well.
Yes.
I'm more concerned with sticking with the budget that we have during the year. I, I know there's emergencies, but you know, as far as, you know, we have plans in place and such and the budget, how well are we sticking to that?
It's more unexpected personnel matters if we don't. We kind of, we're not sticking to it, for example, somebody's out on a leave unexpectedly in the sub-line that goes, goes farther than we thought, or somebody leaves and there's a balance. Personnel things that you can't predict, but we're always trying to get back to refilling the positions as was intended. This is the only time I can think, to be honest, Mr. Les, you know, if somebody suddenly is, we didn't plan for it, and they're going to be out for three months, and we have to pay for a sub, but now there's a balance where their salary would come from, that kind of thing.
And we need to balance those lines. So if, for example, we had a heavy snows this year, we just had to flop, right? So if that line was over, we have no choice at the end of the year but to move the money to balance that line. So it has to, it has to come from somewhere, one of the other lines that we have. Those happen for some of the reasons that were just articulated. But yeah, what this does is it creates a balance to our book, so we, we stay within our budget.
So now, now that we've balanced, I mean, we've done this, how did we do for that budget? Were we pretty well close to what we had wanted to do? Do we know that yet or...
Financially or for the projects that we wanted to?
Well, financially, I, you know, now that we've, you know, okay, we budgeted X amount of dollars for this, how close did we come in general? You know, do we know that yet or...
Yeah, I think we had, it was another year, I think we stayed within budget. I think that E and D once again will be healthy, although that is not closed until August, but that's an estimate, and I think that we'll see, see it around the same amount that it was the year before.
Well, we took a deep dive, Mike, in in the finance subcommittee into things, you know, there was, there was explanation for, for everything, and there wasn't any, there wasn't any project that I know of that sacrificed because we needed money somewhere else. Money was moved around for those types of reasons, so you maybe you were...
Yeah, unless, unless we get a lot of snow or a lot of ice or something, you don't generally see shortfall, you know, or like you say, somebody, an illness or something like that, so. But it's good that we, we budgeted and we came in real close to what we budgeted. That's, that's, I think is our, should be our goal.
Yes. Any other questions? I'm going to make the motion then. Be resolved at the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee, approve the FY19 end-of-year budget transfers in the amount of $354,625 as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for the FY19 end-of-year, FY18 end-of-year transfers. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Chair, we have some other motions to read tonight, and this is the approval to deposit transportation reimbursement funds received in the FY18 budget to the regional transportation reimbursement account. Funds could be used in the FY 2020 to offset transportation assessments.
Okay.
And if you, as you probably recall from previous years, this is the way it works. We take it from 18, it gets into the revolving fund for 19, and we can use it then in 20. So that's why the, the 19 looks missing in the, in the motion.
You want to add applies it to up to?
I, I won't, yes. Were you going to give any other explanation or ask if there was any questions in regards to this?
Does anybody have any questions on this transfer, moving into that fund?
Great, I'm going to just slightly... Great, I'm gonna just slightly amend what you're seeing in your packet to read, before I read the number, it says in your packet, in the amount of, and we're gonna, I'm gonna read in the motion, I want you to be aware of this, that is, move up to. So I'm gonna read the motion. The Central Berkshire Regional School District Finance Subcommittee recommends moving up to seven hundred thousand of the twenty-eighteen transportation reimbursement funds into the regional transportation reimbursement fund to the school committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval to transfer the twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty account. Is there any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries.
That's the end of our report. We'll be meeting again the twenty-third, immediately prior to the school committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Policy, Mr. Heidmeyer's not here this evening, does anyone have a report for policy? Okay. There isn't really no coming up soon, right?
I'm waiting for confirmation on our loans.
Okay. And personnel. Is there one? Is that this evening?
We're here at night.
Okay. Show services.
Well, I have a new person up that they haven't met on. It's actually endorsed by them.
We're gonna move forward with that motion, right? Okay. Do you want to move forward with that, any explanation?
Sure, sure. So I can actually, I've spoken to Mr. Rakatell, who wasn't even here, about that there wasn't the ability to get a personnel subcommittee meeting together for the personnel committee to vote on this, but we put it on the personnel, as it seemed to be the most appropriate place for it to go. And I have researched, I talked to Mr. Les as well, he emailed giving his role as the technology subcommittee chair. So we were presented with an opportunity earlier in, actually, earlier, if that doesn't make sense. We were presented with an opportunity towards the end of the school year from the superintendent Adams Cheshire, who has previously worked with Mr. White, who's our technology director here in Central Berkshire, and obviously thinks very highly of him, as do we. And like us, they're looking at different ways for shared services, and to start to pilot some ways of sharing services where we may have capacity, and they may have a need, or vice versa. And knowing both Mr. White and Mr. Sturgis, who is also exceptionally skilled, Mr. Putnam, Dr. Putnam, thought there was a chance we may have some capacity. It happened to line up for us at a time where, right now, we have two-point-five approximately staff members in the technology department, Mr. White being the technology director, Mr. Sturgis being the assistant technology director, and then to date, we've had a point five technician. What we looked at when we said, could this be something that's a reality for us? So what Adams Cheshire needs is they need somebody with Mr. White's level of skillset who can supervise, who can provide the management. They have the day-to-day manpower, if you will, of people who are in the buildings and setting things up, and that kind of thing, in a technician role, but they're looking for a technology director with the capacity of Mr. White, but they do not need that person full-time. So when we sat down, and this was something that Mr. White was quite open to and excited about, that this could be a good opportunity for us, for him as a professional, and to pilot some shared services, we said, how could we make this happen without any impact? Well, at the same time that this conversation came up, our technician, who is point five, was retiring. So we said, what we really are, is we're very, very well-staffed in the leadership management roles in technology, because we have Mr. Sturgis, who is very capable in that area, Mr. White, who's obviously extremely capable in that area. And if Mr. White was not to be here, however, they both pick up a lot in the technician roles, because we only have point five, so it's not uncommon, it's actually very common to see them, you know, plugging things in, or climbing through things to get wiring done, and those kinds of things. So we said, if we could make this happen without a disruption to our services, we could really restructure and get a full-time technician. Mr. Sturgis would be here full-time, and what Adams Cheshire is looking for is about point four of Mr. White's time per week. So we would stay whole in our two-point-five FTEs, we're just restructuring the position, so we would have a full-time technician when Mr. White is not on site, as is the practice right now, Mr. Sturgis would assume the full responsibility, as he does right now, and Mr. White would still be here about three out of five days a week. It's a very flexible agreement, Adams Cheshire is obviously in support of it and does want to go forward. It sets up quarterly meetings between myself, the superintendent now has changed, so Dr. Putnam brought this idea forth, but fortunately, Mr. Bosberg, who is the new superintendent, is also highly in favor, and their school committee has endorsed that they are in favor of this. We would meet quarterly, myself, the superintendent, Adams Cheshire, our business managers, because there's a financial component, and Mr. White, to see how it's going. We would bring updates to you. It is flexible, and that it can be modified if we feel the need at any time. Mr. White remains a full-time CDRSD employee, so we're in the driver's seat in that way. It would be contracting for what we think is the reasonable amount of time we can give them, for his time. They would pay us on a monthly basis, point four of his salary, it would begin on August first. Any of the movement between the building and the mileage and those kinds of costs and Adams Cheshire would be paid by them, and we would still be fully the employer of Mr. White for evaluation and benefits and those kinds of things. The reason we're bringing it forward tonight and not waiting until August is what I talked about with Mr. Rakatell, understandably, they want to start this now, because some of the busier times is obviously starting the school year, and for Mr. White, if he's gonna get on board, he'd like to do it now, when they're actually getting things started, so he can get a handle on what's going on there. So I would certainly recommend it, I would not be recommending it if I did not feel that Mr. White is fully confident in it, as is Mr. Sturgis, and that we can do that. They have been interviewing, and they do have several candidates for a technician position, and they will fill that within the next week or so. So that is a recommendation I'm bringing forward, I think it's a nice way for us to pry with minimal risk and some possible good benefits, shared services. Open to any kinds of, you know, dialogue or questions there might be about it.
I would say probably my only concern would be, you know, the impact of the staff that we think so highly of right now, and if they're on board, then it sounds like a good idea. But I would just hate to see any disruption in who we have.
Right, again. And interestingly, the one other thing this does do is that, so obviously, so Mr. White does an excellent job, and Mr. Sturgis has grown immensely in the time he's been here, and is very much ready for this kind of a role and responsibility. So one of the things that, and Mr. White is a huge proponent of Mr. Sturgis, so I feel like I can comfortably say, we're always trying to make sure we're keeping him engaged, and we're keeping him also feeling, you know, job satisfaction in his role, because he's a very, very appealable candidate to my colleagues, as they have told me on several occasions, and him, and this gives him some nice capacity to get some more leadership, and for Mr. White to even take another step in his role, but we're able to kind of keep everyone fully employed and feeling good about their roles, and not have the impact. But again, if we thought that was going in a different way, the agreement is flexible, that we are in the control of changing it, or ending it if we had to.
Now, we had decided to go with three full-time IT people as it was already, didn't we?
Not in my time, we've always had, since I've been here-
She's always been two and a half, we weren't gonna go all-
Exactly.
So I just, I worry that, what is it, about the same size district, a little bit smaller?
At least three buildings.
They had three buildings, but-
They do now. They have two buildings on a campus?
Yeah, two buildings at the lone campus and in the lone school, down in Adams. My worry is that at any given time here, at the busiest time, end-cast time, you know, what if something happens and Rick, as good as you are, can't be in two places at once? And that worries me. You know, I just, I just feel like, you know, that's an awful lot to ask, and we're translating a salary job into an hourly position, because we're gonna put him there for sixteen hours, and I know that-
He has a flexibility, though, that is one thing, Ms. Choppa, we did talk to as well. The one thing that I do, and this is with all due respect to Mr. White, and he deserves it, there are not situations that would occur, that are, that'd be very unlikely that Mr. Sturgis cannot handle, he is a capable technology-
Oh, no, absolutely, all the face in the world in him.
It's more than manpower you're kind of thinking of, they have a heavy infrastructure, they have people in place, they need a manager. And it is gonna be, and that was something I was adamant about, that's, you're absolutely right, this is not the kind of role that Mr. White can say, I will be there every Monday and Tuesday, no matter what. The discretion is fully his to schedule how he will be there, so if it's a portion of days, if it's flexing time, he has that discretion as the director to decide what he can do.
I mean, we have a, you know, a duty to him, to make him feel wanted and everything else, but we also have a duty to make him not feel like, you know, this is his whole lot. You know, if we put too much on, and he gets burnt out, then we're S.O.L. So that's my worry, you know, I know you're capable, I know Joe's capable, and whoever we're gonna hire, I have the best, you know, the best training that's available, but I, you know, I worry that, you know, it's a very, can be a very stressful thing, it's not just like at home where you just unplug it.
We have, we've talked for, for now, in my time, we've talked for several years about these shared services. We've dipped our toe in a little bit here and there, we have an established agreement with Pittsfield for the transition program. This is a big step for us, and this is really what the committees asked for, and it's what the community's been asking for, and are there risks, of course, and are there benefits? I do think there are gonna be benefits. What I like about this way of starting is that we're in the driver's seat, and it is exactly what it is, it's a pilot. If it doesn't go well, we can end it, but if we don't try, I think we've gotta try, and this is a good time for us, because we're always talking about how there's been missed opportunities at times, because you have capacity and someone has a need, have to line up. And a big part of this, where we have a great technician, we wouldn't be looking to move away from him, but the fact that he's retiring, and that we can give a full-time technician is a big factor. And the capability of Mr. Sturgis and his abilities are a big factor, lined up with what really Adams Cheshire needs. What they really are looking for is they're looking for the management that Rick can provide.
But when it all shakes out, and you hire your one person, can we get a report on how much savings there's actually gonna be?
Yeah.
Because if there is, you know, if it comes out that there is a need, I would hate to put the pressure on to do that if there's not real savings. So if we come up with a number, and say, and that'll help everybody out, because hey, look at, this is what they did, maybe we can do that.
Exactly, so the savings are, depending on exactly what you said, the savings are gonna be between twenty-two and twenty-five thousand dollars, depending on where the hire comes in at.
Yeah, I know, it's only, you know, it's not a very, it's a quick ride from, say, like, my house to, you know, Whosit Valley, it's not too bad at all, so I wouldn't want to do it in the winter, but, you know, it's-
First of all, I'm all for, you know, other schools on, that that would be great down the road. When I first read this, I had some serious concerns, specifically with the staffing, and I went back and looked at budget requests in the past years, and I couldn't do it in the past two years, because you've utilized the technology subcommittee, open access to your budget in the fall, for two, the past two years. I went back the year before that, and I found that the technology director, the director, asked for a full-time for the past five years before that.
I have to, I have to, I do take issue with that, I have, if you're supposed to, it's not my budget, it's the budget I bring that becomes the school committee's budget. I work to prepare that with the finance subcommittee, it is always available to you as much as it exists. I've never been in possession of anything, nor has Ms. Velkowsky, and I know that Mr. Amicost has weighed in on this, but if there's something that I am being asked to do, I want to have directive from Mr. Amicost on behalf of the committee, because I will do it right, Mr. Les. I am doing what I believe is the right thing, they send the guidance and the advice I've gotten from the finance subcommittee, and from the chair of the school committee. If you want me to do something different, I need to be clear on what it is, because I don't know what that is.
Oh, yes, I told you what it was.
There was a dialogue-
For me, it's fine.
All right, can we move on?
Okay. From the past years, the administration gave, you know, heads-up in the fall to the technology subcommittee for what was coming down the road, you know, as far as what they're gonna ask in the budget and come here. We were denied that the past two falls. All of a sudden, the budget, and actually, the administration was told not to share the information with the technology subcommittee in the fall until the budget came out in January. It happened two years in a row, and-
This is not, I do take issue, I feel like I'm being slandered right now, and I'm not okay with it, and I very rarely get professionally, you know, this, I really do feel that-
Ask the people on technology subcommittee.
I really do feel that it's not right, the way that I'm being spoken of in a public session.
So let's go on to the head count. The technology coordinator has been a mostly full-time person for years now.
I am not aware of that, once again.
We're two and a half now, right?
I have the technology, the director of technology submits a budget all the time, and I'm not aware of that. There's never been a disagreement between myself and Mr. White as to his budget, in fact, we've been, he's sitting right there.
He was chopped out because of budget concerns, and we understood that, we understood-
That was under Dr. Cameron's- I have never been asked, and it was not-
It was a passion, it was for you.
But I've never been asked of something from Mr. White that I haven't supported, but it wasn't for a technician.
Let's also know the question, how many devices are shipped that we're talking about?
The exact number of devices that they have-
How many windows and how many Apple?
So I'm sure Mr. White could get that information, like we said, he'd give regular updates to you, and he's sitting right there, we're riding along.
Who made this decision to support them without knowing how many devices?
We did not make it, we're asking, if you decide if you want to support them, and Mr. White has knowledge to believe that he feels he could do the job well, and he thinks it's something he has capacity for, and that's what I'm largely referring to, Mr. White really feels he could do this well. I have both-
But then he would ask for a complete full-time person, because it takes a lot more people to support Windows than Apple. If you don't know how many devices, how was this decision made to support them, without fully knowing how many people we're gonna need to support them? I have some serious concerns that this is gonna tax our technology department if we take on too much. We probably need full-time people to do this.
I will say, the person who recommended this is Dr. Putnam. Dr. Putnam was here for several years, he worked closely with Mr. White, Mr. Sturgis, and Mr. Jacoby, he knows our staffing, he knows our plan as to how we're going to move forward, he knows what Adams Cheshire has for technology needs, he knows what we have, and he has felt that this would be a good fit, because if Adams Cheshire needed more, they should go for more. They have felt, no, we're in a little bit of a unique situation. You're right, Mr. Les, I don't know the details of Adams Cheshire, however, Dr. Robert Putnam knows the details of Adams Cheshire and of Central Berkshire, and I think a lot of us have faith in him, and he feels this would be a positive shared services. I have Mr. White feeling that way, I have Mr. Sturgis. I have been charged by this school committee on several occasions that we need to start looking at shared services. We want to have options brought forward to us. I am doing that, I'm bringing an option forward to you, and I'm giving my professional opinion, and I think it's a really good one, and I think that what we can do with the staffing we have here is sustain the quality we currently have. If at any time that wasn't the case, I would bring that information to you. If at any time Mr. White wasn't feeling this was working well, he'd bring that information to you. And if at any time Adams Cheshire felt that way, they'd bring that information forward. But what I'm doing right now is I'm presenting to you what I think is a really good opportunity for a shared service agreement with a district not too far from us, who has a need, and we believe we have a capacity that it could come together as a nice marriage. It is not, however, it's a one-year contract with multiple exit provisions, if it doesn't go well, both in the short term and at the end of the contract. If it goes well, it's totally up to you if you want to continue with it.
It is a very good idea, I'm just saying, how were these new staffing levels decided upon?
With talking with Mr. White, who runs the technology department, that what we would need for this to be done well, right now, there is capacity, we are talking, there is capacity with Mr. Sturgis and Mr. White, they are exceptionally skilled, they do their jobs exceptionally well, but in order for it to happen, we don't need more of that, we do need another half of the technician. It's gone well, there's a nice dance, Paul and Joe and Rick run a wonderful department. Sometimes our service here is almost, it's too quick, I mean, I said that, it's too quick. I mean, Rick says that the bar right now, people don't need to wait two minutes, it's fast food, I mean, with excellent quality, I guess it's Chipotle, but the quality fast food is excellent, but there's never even a two-second delay, we are spoiled by Rick, by Joe, and by Paul. But, I'm not saying we shouldn't be spoiled, so I said to Rick, I'm not saying let's be a little less spoiled, and maybe people have to wait five minutes, and maybe sometimes I have to wait five minutes, which is fine. I said, how do we need to sustain the fact that we're spoiled? He said, we need another half-time of Paul, and I need that position to be full-time, and that would work. I said, would that work? Yes, we believe it will. Could we be wrong? If we are, we're gonna bring it to you and ask you for more, but right now, we believe that that will work well, and then to be honest, we have, make some of my conversation-
I support this whole endeavor, I really do, I just don't support the number. I don't think you're putting the right resources, I think my resources are into this. In fact, you don't know how many devices there are.
Can I just say quickly that I'm in support of this as well? I think I can do a good job for Adams Cheshire and for Central Berkshire. It is a pilot, though, so we're gonna find out. We don't know yet, let's see where this leads, that's all.
But can I just ask a question? They do have support in Adams Cheshire.
They do.
They do have people who do what you're thinking that Joe and the new technician are going to do, I think they have to-
They have two, I believe, this coming year, they'll have two half-time people at the Millon High School, and a full-time person for their elementary school.
And how many devices?
I don't know that yet, they're mostly Mac, though, Mac and Core Book.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Anyone else? Ellen?
I was just gonna say, while I understand your point of how many devices are together- have enough support, as Mr. White was saying, they have their, the technical staff there. They're just looking for someone to oversee the technical staff, so.
Coming from, I'm an IT guy, and it's a little more than that a lot of times. Rick will attest to that.
We do have, and Rick had, Dr. Putnam, and anybody who worked with Dr. Putnam, and Dr. Putnam worked for many of the people on the committee, I mean, he is one of the most thorough people you'll, you'll ever meet. He's very fond of something called his manholes, and he outlines everything, Rick is, everything. So he has been so above board with this, with Rick, and Rick is going in with his eyes absolutely wide open of everything he's looking for, specifically spelled out. And that, to me, Mr. Les, I did rely on that. I wasn't working with a superintendent who didn't know us and didn't know our needs. So that, that gave me a lot of reassurance that I was working with Dr. Putnam.
One last question. Do we have access to your preliminary IT budget in October like we normally do?
The preliminary IT budget in October? If there's a document that Rick has that early, that is, I have not seen that-
It's around, it's days before Christmas.
I haven't really seen that till today, but with what you're looking for, a forecast of what we're going to be bringing forward in the forecast that goes to finances-
Because I have in past years, about October-
I don't see that late issue, but I, again, I don't know, I don't wanna overstep my bounds with finance.
Yeah, let's, let's, that's not the topic tonight, so we'll address that at a later date. Can someone please make a motion?
Sure. Okay. Sure. So, to, to the point of, of the issue that's on the table, you know, I kinda hear what, I kinda hear what John is saying in regards to, so, we're, we're giving up approximately sixteen hours of Rick's time to get twenty hours of a tech's time, right? So I think most people feel like Rick's sixteen hours is probably much more valuable than, than a tech in twenty-hour tech position, just given his breadth of knowledge, his scope that he has. So I, I understand, also, keep in mind, I've been on both finance and, and tech sub for the last eight years, so I, I know how some, I can, I think I understand, I think I understand what may have been happening in regards to the, the other conversation, but that's not on the table right now. But I do have, to John, I'm, I'm in support of this, but I think from a tech subcommittee, I'd like to take a hard look at, one thing is the job description, and I, I wouldn't keep this from, from moving this forward, and I would vote to do this, but I think we take, need to take a hard look at Jo, Rick's job description, because I think he's probably, over time, been really pulled out of that job description, and I think to do this effectively, he really needs to probably stick to the job description that's there, because he's been a tech a lot of the times. And then that kinda goes back to, to John's point, is, so what are you really getting out of this exchange? I think we should pilot it, we should go forward with it, but through tech subcommittee and through the budget process this year, that may not be enough, and we may have to add a little more tech time in to really support. I mean, we're going device for every student this year, so that puts a little bit more burden on, on our system here. Not that we don't have excellent people, and we'll have twenty more, twenty more hours of tech time than we ever had, but that honestly, in, in the loss of Rick's time, may not be enough. But I think we should move this forward. I think through tech sub, we should work with the budget process and, and see if we really need to expand that a little bit more.
It's on your agenda.
So here's, here's a suggestion, that we would have our first review of this in October, the second meeting in October, it can come to the, the school committee. That's not a full quarter, but it's close enough. At that time, if there's some preliminary numbers that tech sub can get, everything, I would suggest that everything go to tech sub for the initial evaluation, and then bring it to the committee. So you can plan a meeting, how's that?
We're meeting September tenth.
Okay, but this, this would, this would be for late October, so plan, plan a-
Okay.
No, plan a, plan a meeting for late October for, you know, first to talk about the evaluation of how this is going, but then, if there's something to bring forward for the budget or projection at that time.
Okay.
Okay?
Will do.
Sounds good.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Too crazy to talk.
Well, why don't you read the motion here?
Four minutes.
Shared services position under personnel, only reading.
Yeah, please.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve entering into an agreement with Adams-Cheshire for the technical, technology director.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the shared services agreement. Is there any discussion? Seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Exclusions? Motion carries. Do you have a report this evening?
Now we go, we have gotten that, we are meeting September tenth. I bring together, I have several items on your agenda now. If anyone else has any items they wanna add, please contact me.
Okay. We've already heard on the building project, is there any else you wanted to add?
No, I think that was the question. That was twenty-third, the next week.
Yeah. You heard that this evening, that coincides with our school committee. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, good.
The one other thing I just wanted to make a side note of is that with the building project, I know for a while with Trooper Andy Kanata, you know Andy, that's great. Still no need to describe Andy. So he had advised, and as have some of my colleagues who have gone to building projects as superintendents, that a public safety subcommittee would be formed, it'd be a very small group that would be able to work pretty, pretty flexibly with probably our building vice principal, Steve Messina, Trooper Kanata, chief co, our fire chief here in Dalton, our emergency response responders, Jason Dion, a couple people like that, usually gets into place in the later part of the fall, because any of the kinds of things they might be recommending would impact the overall budget for the project. So I, I know that's a concern as it should be, and that is something that's going to be put in place this fall, and we have some great people willing to participate.
Any questions? We saw a couple of different designs of the one project model that they're considering. Have the one, first thing, individuals like Trooper Kanata, having input into any of the versions that they discussed in the working group, because I know there's another option of two A that was presented tonight. I'm wondering if they had any input into that?
The option that we, we might all have, like, the instinct is not by the, it's probably gonna be their favorite or ours. No, they, they have not actually, we actually, I just, we on our school, our retired chief of police is on our school building, right? It's true. It's us.
We did have a plan to bring them on board. They did have some early, some early opinions that some of the options that were way in the back, that that's not good.
And that open courtyard is.
So we, we do have some input, but not, not comprehensive, and I think our plan is to try to get that from both chief co and Trooper Kanata.
Yeah, and there are, and the, I think that one that Bonnie is referring to, there's a pretty strong consensus for a lot of reasons, both safety and other priorities.
The third, two A, three, seems a little different from what the school, the budget school building committee looked at, so I just seem to know if Trooper Kanata had any input that would make that more desirable.
Okay. Certainly sure. I'll take it, certainly sure. I'll see you, see you again one Friday.
Here's the next, more to business, the superintendent's report.
So just a couple of quick things, and then I'm gonna defer to Leslie, because I would like you to hear from her. So we've got over, obviously, the shared service agreement. I am trying to highlight things, because it's keeping me also focused on it, of where we are collaborating and using resources to gain things we might not be able to do individually. So the first one is the fab maker initiative, and really, that was a product of the superintendent's roundtable, which is coordinated by Bill Valens, while the superintendents in the county meet on a regular basis, and we've been looking at ways we can share services, or we can work together to get grants we might not get individually, combine resources for professional development. So we did receive a grant, Leslie was, again, an integral part of this, in a, of getting this, this, this for Central Berkshire, and of lobbying Preston not only get one for our elementary, but also for our middle school. So we will be getting those machines, and we'll also be getting the training for them, completely free of charge through this grant. And the one at the middle school will go to Dave Lennon, it will be incorporated into the course that he currently teaches as part of the Explorer program. So I don't know a ton about it right now, other than, than what I've read and what I've, I've learned through the, the process. But once they're up and running, maybe if you have some of the, the teachers who are working with them, come in, maybe some real examples of what the kids have been able to create in 2D, 3D through the machines. So definitely will do that. Quick update on the Nessicus motion.
Can I just, I can plug that, and pick it quick, and make some really, my daughter McCrazy's in college, you know, making all sorts of goofy stuff. But I noticed that it's, one's in Nessicus and one's in Kittredge. Is there any way we can incorporate the other elementary schools so that they can participate and be fluent in it by the time they come to Nessicus? Whether it be on a club basis, maybe a teacher can go and, and, you know, hey, we're gonna have a 3D printing club after school, if you're interested, you know, so that when they get here, it's just not all the kids from Kittredge know how to use the machine, so they're not feeling the opera, so, you know, I think it'll, it'll be, the kids that really like computers and really excited to stuff will really enjoy it, and I think it might bring in some of the other ones, and might not, because, you know, it's kinda fun, you're making something, you can make whatever. So I think if we can try, once this gets up and running, to see if somebody can go and maybe do a, a Quimble those extend. It's four or five weeks, the month of October, maybe do a 3D printing thing, have them come here afterwards, print up what they, they came up with, and then bring it back for the, for the, the thing they had at the end, the extend fair, and say, hey, look at, this is what we did it. And I, I think that would be great, and I know they have things up at, back at Washington, so it's, yes, it's in the district, and we're calling it a district thing, but it's only in two schools. So if we can come up with something to get the other schools involved with this, even if it's after school, you know, because Mr. Lennon's is an Explorer thing, so that's not, you know.
So the software is actually available to all schools of the district. So the software is actually open for everybody. Those are the two schools that have had the initial training. What we can absolutely, and our goal is to include all schools, so everybody will be able to be trained. So they're going to actually kick it off, but absolutely, if there's any interest on the part of, we'll, we'll encourage it. But we're gonna start out with the two places that were trained, but as, but it's open, it's actually available for all schools.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, it's a great, you know, the extend fair would be a great thing to, you know, have, you know, somebody who is trained in it, come down and say, hey, we're gonna do this. You know, instead of Lego thing, we're gonna, you know, do this, and maybe you can make your own Legos or something.
And we're not, we're not, we don't, we, we think this looks great, like something that's really gonna work well for us. Fortunately, it's grant-funded, so this is a good way to pilot it, but there are other opportunities that if we really think this would be a good resource for the other two schools. So just for example, I got an email earlier this week from somebody who works at General Dynamics, that they're looking, they're actually asking us for ways they could support us in, through grants, that could, you know, are we looking for anything? Could we write a proposal? So if this is something that goes well, I do believe there'd be opportunity to, to get an introduction.
And then, once again, and I hate to bring this up, but there was a thing at the bottom of the news today, that is, you know, you hate to think that somebody could make something on one of them, it's probably not appropriate, but it's, it's possible. So we've gotta make sure that we have all our ducks in a row as far as what they can make and what they can't, because I guess it's gonna be legal now to make weapons, I guess, or something, so.
Just to, just to suggest, and to build on what you're saying, is these things, the units are very important. It's like a little printer, so, you rotate.
Right. And plus the fact that, I mean, you can, the kids work onto the cream bill and hit a button, and the machine does it at Kittredge. So, I mean, it, it can be that simple, but I think they should need to, they need to see what they're, you know, at least once or twice, you know? So it, it can be that simple, and, you know, I'd like to see everybody get a, a chance to make something.
So the first training is coming up in August, it'll be countywide, and we'll talk with the people who are going to, we can do that in our district, and how other people are addressing it. Definitely, it was, it was a good opportunity for us, and, and again, kind of just a way out, I think individually we would've gotten the level of grant funding we did, if we hadn't gone out and done that. Just an update on the Nessicus principal search. So we, we have been in, in the throes of this now for a while. I am incredibly grateful for the work that the search committee did. They brought forth four candidates to interview. As I identified in my report, we had an internal candidate, ultimately decided to withdraw after the, the interview process. However, we had three other candidates. I did have time to spend with each of them, as did Ms. Velkowsky, Joanne Dowling, the vice principal, and Leslie Davis. At this time, we are not continuing to, to pursue any of the candidates, and the search committee is, is, I believe, understanding of that. There were some things that, that came out in, in some of our, our reference jacks, in some of our dialogue, that led us to believe that that was not the right thing for us as a district right now. And that is not a decision I would ever make lightly, it's a decision I've been able to dialogue with the search committee about, and extensively with, with members of the school committee who participated on the search. I did send the final email, letting people know today, and ask them if they felt differently, and if anybody wanted to say they felt differently, knowing what they know, to please do let me know, and I have not, had not heard, which is, is what I expected due to the information I was sharing. So I think that it was, it was a good process, it was run well, people put in a lot of time, and I think one of the things that, that unfortunately, we, we had a pool that, that did not produce what we had hoped, and we're not willing to settle. We're not willing to settle. We cannot do that, and, and that feels wrong to me about that. Students, staff, and our families need stability, and they know we need, they need to know of bringing someone in, that we have confidence we'll be there for a, a long time, and we'll be able to lead them well. So that's right now where we are at. Leslie has been incredible, and is, is still the acting principal at Nessicus, and is continuing to get the work done however she has asked, and I absolutely am gonna honor it, that she not continue after August fifteenth. She's not a licensed middle school principal, and she has a full-time job as the director of teaching and learning, that she's gotta get, get back to, and say that, even knowing that she's working around the clock for both. But that is her role. So I have committed to her that that will be, that will be our, our deadline, and that position continues to be posted. I am gonna have some dialogue at the beginning of the week with the teachers who participate on the search committee, as ultimately it is my responsibility to hire our principal, but it will have a big impact on them, so I wanna have some conversations with them, Joanne, Leslie, as well as some of the other teacher leaders at Nessicus. And at that point, I'm going to make a decision. So by next Friday, I'd like to make a decision. We're, we're in limbo at this point, and I think it's not fair for our, our families and our students, or the staff. on the Search Committee, as ultimately it is my responsibility to hire our principal, but it will have a big impact on them, so I want to have some conversations with them, Joanne, Leslie, as well as some of the other teacher leaders at Nescus. And at that point, I'm going to make a decision. So by next Friday, I'd like to make a decision. We're in limbo at this point, and I think it's not fair for our families and our students or the staff. So that's where we're at. If you have any questions about that, if you want to dialogue with that, about that further, please do call me. I'd be happy to do that. Please do. I will be in the office all day tomorrow, and if you want to ask questions or you want to talk further, please feel free to call me. I'd be happy to talk about it. But that's where I'm at. So, on that, so on an uplifting note, not a really uplifting note, so Leslie Blake-Davis, this is so uplifting, and this is awesome, and she is, she deserves a lot more. This is really exciting. So some of you know about David Sommergrad, he's a consultant we work with. About a while ago, I don't know, seven, eight years ago, maybe longer at this point, David Sommergrad introduced me, connected me, brought me to know a man called, a man named Alan November. I'm not sure if people are familiar. Alan November, right, Alan November, global superstar Alan November. He's one of those education-like superstars. Yeah, so Alan November, he runs a conference called the Building Learning Communities Conference in Boston. It has now become, it attracts people from all over the world. Thousands of educators go to the Park Plaza in Boston for three days, and you will meet people from all over the world there. It's incredible. And it's all about global connectivity and using student voice. Alan November, he has several books. He coined the phrase the thousand-dollar pencil. If you don't do anything with an iPad other than turn it on and type, it's a thousand-dollar pencil. Technology empowers kids to connect beyond their world, beyond the world right around them, that they can make global connections, they can understand things from different perspectives. That's what it's all about at its core. So Leslie, which is phenomenal, is quite incredible. Leslie has had this amazing connection with the Beckett Outdoor winners and specifically with their Director Steve Hammel and a man in our community, Harry Yu. And that's how she went to China, that's how we've had the students from China here in our program. She submitted a proposal to Alan November to present at the conference and was selected. I mean, this conference, this isn't like a cream of the crop kind of conference, this is an, I believe, right? It's an amazing conference. A lot of our staff have been. Liv Bitz, who's our opening day keynote, she presents there every year. They have some, the man who invented Will from Alpha did one of the opening speeches, David DeHari is another teacher who gets really excited about it, was there. So it's really quite, quite an incredible coming together of educators and of people in the field of technology. And so Leslie submits this proposal, they select it, and down to Boston go Leslie and Steve Hammel and Harry Yu. And so Leslie's going to talk a little bit about what she shared, and yeah, so it was pretty awesome. She's right there on the agenda of Building Learning Communities Conference in Boston. Go Leslie.
So I'm just going to give you a little synopsis of what I presented to, at the conference yesterday alongside Steve Hammel, who's the Executive Director for the Berkshire Outdoor Center, and Harry Yu. And Harry Yu is the Director for an organization called Berkshire Adventures. Berkshire Adventures is our business liaison with China. So he would be responsible for recruiting students, working with families, arranging for flights. Visas are really, can be complicated. We don't always, you know, students and families may want to participate in the program but are not always granted a visa, or sometimes we have visas granted at the last minute. So we're, so because of those things, he plays a very important role, and we really emphasize in our program the value of having this triad partnership. And of course, Steve Hammel, who's the Executive Director of the Berkshire Outdoor Center, plays a different role in this partnership in that he provides the students with more of a camp opportunity. And Central Berkshire, and one of the things that I presented to, to the audience, is that, you know, for us, it's really, it's really a community, it's really a community goal for us that, or a community event in the sense that we can't, this would not be possible if we didn't have administrative support, Lori's support, Melissa's support, your support, because there's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that happen in order for this program to happen. So initially, it was really just Steve, because I had a relationship with him and already Beckett-Washington had a partnership with him in a place-based environmental science program as part of our original Innovation School. He called me because we already had developed what I would think of as a very trusting relationship. He said, I have students that will be visiting from China, would you be willing to open up your school and have those, invite those students in for a two-week school experience? And he said, in return, and I think I, this is, I think I've already presented, but this is just a little backstory recap, he said, in return, if you could recommend some students that would actually stay at the camp, we call it, he called it a kind of a stay-at-camp program, as opposed to the more typical international programs where students stay in homes. This is a stay-at-camp experience, and that's one of the things that I think does make it unique. And he said, we will, free of charge, offer a stay-at-camp experience to some Beckett-Washington students and families that were comfortable, the teachers would recommend. And that's kind of how we got started. And I think our original goal was just basically, definitely, I mean, there's this huge piece of, yes, global connectivity, but I think our initial goal was just friendship. We just wanted the students to be friends. We just wanted them to have a reference, a reference point for what it looks like to have a connection with a student from another country. In this case, the country was China. So when I, the very beginning of our presentation, so just to continue that thought, it's evolved from there to what we term a more global, a global citizenship program. So we think of it more, Steve and I and Harry have gotten together multiple times and talked about what our goals are, what our purpose is, what we want the outcome for students to be, and based on those conversations, what do we want their experience to look like? So I will tell you that as part of that planning process, there are really three stages. There's a planning component to it, which is before the students arrive. There's real-time collaboration, which happens, you know, things come up all the time. For example, this summer, one of the things that came up is we had to combine two groups of students from China, incorporate them into our summer program because of, because of the way their visas ended up working out. And then there's always a debrief, and then, and all those phases of the, of the planning are very important. So at the, at BLC 18, we all presented, so it wasn't just me presenting, it was really Steve and I and Harry. We gave a little synopsis of CBRSD, of the Berkshire Outdoor Center, and of Harry's organization, Berkshire Adventures. And one of the things, again, that I emphasized with Central Berkshire is that as a smaller school district, we very much value and thrive on our community partnerships. And that's a really key element of providing enriching opportunities for our students. From there, we talked a little bit about, I talked, I spoke a little bit about the program evolution, which is a little bit, which is a little bit about, you know, again, forming those sort of trusting relationships, knowing that, that the triad partnership, we could communicate at any time, and no matter what came up, we would be able to solve it. And that was not only just between Steve and Harry and I, but very much also involved Lori and involved Melissa. If things came up around transportation, without Lori's support, saying, you know, yeah, let's do it, let's make this happen, we wouldn't have been able to have this kind of a program. One of the things, and I will put these out if you're interested, one of the things that we ended up really summarizing this program in a pamphlet called Global Citizenship, included our goals. So this is really, when we met this year, we decided that, you know, we sort of talked about categories of our goals and purpose for our students. One is just thinking globally. These sound really big and broad, but in a minute, like on the next slide, I'll kind of explain to you from a student perspective and a teacher's perspective, what they kind of, how they translate and what they look like in real time. Gaining an appreciation for other world cultures, understanding world viewpoints, being able to collaborate effectively with students from other cultures, contributing responsibly, interacting and building relationships, striving to become more knowledgeable about other cultures to develop values, and showing respect and open mindedness in behavior and thinking. I will tell you, around these goals, Steve and Harry and I did a lot of research. We looked at a lot of studies and a lot of papers that had been written around this topic to make sure we were thinking clearly about what we wanted for our students. So how do we make this happen? There are really two, two components to the program, or two parts. There's a summer program, and there's a winter program. And then there are also two sets of learners, right? There are American students, and then there are Chinese students. Right now, we have the summer component of our program happening. So what that looks like is, we have students that arrive here in this room, which is why it's, you can see there are some books in Mandarin, there's some books in English, but we have students that arrive here in the morning, and they're here until noon time. So the students, we have American students that arrive in the morning, and we have our Chinese students that come from the camp that also arrive in the morning. Our students, there are three components to this program, it's an abbreviated day. So it's really kind of a learning enrichment opportunity for CBRSD students, and it's, it is the same, I guess, for our Chinese students, but also, you know, getting an experience with an American school and American culture. But we have an ELA, an English kind of reading and writing component, we have a math component, and we have a component where we call Global Citizenship. Because communicating effectively is, is part of our goal, some of the things that the students do, for example, is we have book clubs. And this year, we decided that we, you know, we wanted to have some books in English and some books in Mandarin, so we could sort of eliminate that language barrier to some degree. I will tell you that there's an interpreter that also comes with the Chinese students. So we had, so that was, that's been a lot of fun. So many of them, we were, I was limited into, regarding the choices, because I could only find certain books in Mandarin and English together. And then Harry, who happened to be in China at the time, brought these two huge bundles back for me of certain books that I had requested. Because if you look on Amazon and you actually want to buy a book that's in Mandarin, it costs like $600. I don't understand it. But, but we had this, you know, they weren't, and they weren't always necessarily my choices. Call of the Wild was one of them, which is a very sophisticated book, and Harry and I had kind of an open discussion, a book talk about Call of the Wild and how it was kind of sad, and the kids were just like totally in tune and listened, listening to us, and Harry's saying, yes, we should read it. I'm saying, it's really sad, it's about a dog. And he's saying, but it's from the dog's perspective. That ended up being one of the books the students really loved. But part of our goal in doing that was to study character from, from the perspective of the dog, or from characters from, you know, in various books, so that students could communicate with each other about the characters in their books and talk about human emotions and experiences. So that was really the rationale behind having two sets of books. In the morning, they start out with a morning meeting about expectations, they talk a little bit about communication. The teacher here who, who does spend time with me, and we do have some training, makes sure that the small groups and the collaboration that occurs are always integrated with American and Chinese students. So they become comfortable with spending time with each other. There's a math component, which is very digitally based, and then there's another component which we call Global Citizenship. The Global Citizenship component in real time looks like we start with something called an identity map, where students really illustrate the different communities that they're part of. Are they, their neighborhoods, their families, their schools, and they might include also some of their interests. And then from those, they share those out, and from that, then they take one of those topics and they actually expand more on that. So then from there, they might expand and they might report out more on their neighborhood. Again, there's a lot of illustrating, because that's an easy way to communicate, writing that goes with their illustrating, to whatever level they're comfortable with, and then verbally communicating about their neighborhoods. So that's, that's continuing to happen. That's primarily, right now, like we have a lot of lofty goals, as you can see, but that's primarily right now where we are in terms of rolling out their Global Citizenship and understanding where each of them, you know, their individual cultures. I will say, and then, and then what happens is the students that are here around noon time, and this has been such a nice program this year, at noon time, all students, including Central Berkshire students that are involved, at no cost, go off to the Berkshire Outdoor Center. So, and what they do when they get to the Berkshire Outdoor Center is they can, you know, they swim in the lake, they climb ropes, they, you know, they do, I don't know what they do, they, you know, they do the wall climbing, they do all these things that, that very often some of the students that are participating might not have an opportunity to do. And we also provide transportation, so they're picked up at Creamville School at 4:45. So it's a really nice program. So they have an opportunity to collaborate in two ways, one through kind of a more academic setting, and one in a more, in a camp setting. In our winter program, the students spend full days with us. And, and so the Chinese students experience everything that the American students experience, and then the students themselves that are, that are participating, and not all students want to participate, because one of the questions I had yesterday was, well, how do you choose? Not all families want to participate, not all students want to participate. Because what it involves in the winter program is the students actually go off to the camp, and they spend the night at the camp. And what's really nice about that is they're there with trained counselors, they have the space to form relationships, kind of in a way that's led by them. There, it is, it's very, it's different than a, than a home setting, I think. And I think as a, as a result of that, students form some pretty close bonds. Maintaining that communication, which is, which would, is a bit of a challenge, because students don't have access to Gmail in China, and they don't have access to Twitter. There are a lot of social media applications that students don't have access to, and email when they're there. One of the things that we just talked about at BLC 18 yesterday when we were in Boston is, is, you know, we've sort of, it's a program we're really proud of, and it's a program that we're very proud that we've been able to bring to that venue and actually present. And we talked a little bit about what, how, how another district could take, could try to, could do the same thing. We talked about the structures, the support from you, from the community, from school committees, from the administration, having developing trusting relationships, always putting at the forefront the well-being of these children and families. And if you think, you know, this, if we think about Massachusetts standards, we want our children to be future-ready. We really want them to be comfortable communicating with students from other cultures. That is such an important skill. Are they going to walk away completely comfortable? Probably not, but if they see the world just a little bit differently because of it? Hopefully, yes. You know, and hopefully, you know, but the structures around, like I said, the sort of, the planning phase, the real-time problem solving, you know, daily, I'm communicating with Harry, I'm communicating with Steve, I'm communicating with the counselors, taking pictures, that kind of thing, and then the debrief afterwards, saying, what do we want next year to look like? How do we want this to look different? What could we do differently? How can we make it even better? So those structures, I think, the collaborating and the problem solving, I think, are really important. Again, like I said, the community support is instrumental. And just, I'll continue to update you on our work. Do you have any questions?
I have questions, more. Start with a comment, because this is amazing. Good work. I know the winter program, and I remember you presenting maybe a year or two ago about it, and it seemed like it was Beckett-Washington, maybe Nescus students. Has that grown within the district to include some of the other schools, or is the opportunity going to, you know, kind of dilute through the other schools?
That's our goal. Our goal is for it to grow. We ran into an issue this winter, we ran into an issue with students and visas, and sometimes the political climate will also affect, you know, that, and sometimes students will not be granted visas. So this is where we're always flexible. But the idea is yes, and part of, part of our taking this to, like, BLC 18, part of that was to help it grow, but also to, to sort of consolidate our ideas and our thoughts. And already, Harry has an app called WeChat. WeChat is really the only app that I was able to use in China. It's what, it's what communities in China use for just about everything, paying for things, for communicating with each other, but also for kind of, it's social media. But, but finding programs like this, where we've already begun putting up, you know, recruiting students for families for the winter, we want more schools to participate. We want to bring this school to Creamville. Yes, we, in this summer program, we have students from all of the schools, so it's disseminated in that regard. In the winter, it hasn't yet, but that is definitely our goal. And I think if we were to invite, say, a whole class of students from China, we would have to, because they have so many more, their schools are so much larger than ours. We would maybe even have to invite another district to participate with us, because the groups are just a lot larger general, in general, there. So that is our hope, yes. We're working really hard to make that happen.
That's great.
Yeah. Thank you. If, on your way out, if you want to take one of these brochures, this is kind of, it sort of summarizes some of the research we've done, it kind of summarizes the program itself. Feel free to do that. I'll leave it over here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Super Dennis makes a notice of personnel changes. One exit, seven incoming.
Just a note that, so just a couple on there that might catch your attention. So Joe Kovacs has resigned, which is a huge loss for us, but he's relocating and we're happy for him. But you might, that might raise your eyebrows, that is a loss for us, but he's relocating and we're excited for him, but a loss for us. And Stephanie Clark is returning as a teacher. Many of you knew her as the, some of you knew her as a teacher and then knew her as our director, and she chose to step down from that role for certain reasons, but is back as a teacher and excited to be here, and it's a, it's a benefit to us. So the rest are our new hires, we are excited for them.
Okay, then we have no old business. Does anyone have any new business they'd like to brought up for the next school committee in August?
Well, I noticed that we have a new Food Service Director. Would it be possible to have him come to meet us and say hello and see what he's going to bring to the table possibly? Rose served the district very well and, and for a very long time, so this may be an opportunity to see if he's going to bring something new, or if it's just going to be the same old stuff, or the same old school lunch. Hopefully not, but, yeah, we're still, there's still parents on the committee whose kids still eat that school lunch, so they may want to see, they may have questions that he can answer.
His official start date is August 1st, so once he gets acclimated, I will certainly put him on the school committee agenda to come and meet everyone. put him on the school committee agenda to come meet everyone.
That's great. Thank you. Hey, I can't wait to meet him. Anyone? I just have one remark. The search committee, Barbara jumped in. I was really impressed with the attention and the passion of the people on that committee. I mean, they were all, all employees of the district. Two of them were there as PTO members. The rest were teachers, then there was myself and Barbara, and then Aaron Robb. So I think everyone had, everyone had a stake. We spent, we spent a day, I hope I didn't repeat, say this already, but we spent a day basically going over what we wanted to see as for qualifications, our expectations for that, for the new principal. And then we dug right in. And we had, we must have had, I'm guessing there were about 12, maybe 12 resignees or so, at the end of the, end of the process.
And I wanted to just, you know, say what you're saying, but add that Aaron Robb was just incredible.
He did a great job.
I have another respect, another level of respect for him and how well he works, bringing everybody together. I think what was unique about this committee was that when we developed the list of attributes we were looking for for candidates, we kept on referring to that as we interviewed candidates. So it wasn't just an exercise we did one day, but it was relevant in the whole search.
Did they meet the requirements?
Right. That was good. I was very impressed with it.
Yeah, it was a good process. Everyone spoke their mind. There was no holding back on anything, so it was good to go through the process. I'm sorry it didn't result in any candidates. Very impressive.
Can you explain a little bit of what happened? And I thought we had a person.
I mean, I think that I can say with confidence that the, when you interview someone, that's absolutely a component, and it's an important component. And we did interview educators who had a lot of knowledge and a lot of experience and were able to interview very well, but the other components did not come out as solid. That when we had to do reference checks and things of that nature, we had reason to believe that this would not be a fit for us right now. So it was not about the interviews that the people, the people gave. Sean and Barbara are right, we have people who have a great ability to, I think, not only talk good education, but are good educators. It's just a matter of some of the circumstances that came out would indicate it was not a fit for us.
So are we back to square one?
Essentially, but we're going to need to move forward and we're going to need to do that one in the next week or so.
Yeah. I think it's, I think it's more important that we're back to square one, that we didn't end up with the right fit, the wrong fit.
That was sort of the driving force. We didn't want the wrong person. We wanted to make sure it was the right person. So when we learned additional information, I think we responded the right way, the prudent way.
Correct. You're right. I mean, yeah, you got to, you want a very good person, so.
Right. I think Barbara spent a lot of time with background checks. Several other people did as well. Administration probably went two times or three times that, you know, to double-check in facts and trying to reach out to a lot of adjacent people, so.
And I really do respect the committee, because it's very tempting on a search committee. You want to make a choice. And I think that they, you put in a lot of time, and you want to end with a choice. And I think that what they did is they prioritized the right choice over having a choice. They're just saying, "We just got to find someone." That was not the attitude. It was very open-minded. We need to think of all factors and all information and really process it and be okay if we have to walk away right now, because we need a long-term fit.
Anyone else? I can't motion to adjourn. Okay, moving second, and all is a favorite.
Aye.
Meeting stands adjourned at 8:55.